Okay.
Okay, we'll call the meeting in order. That roll call please.
Joe Meyer?
Here.
Eastling?
Here.
Clink Hammer?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Rice?
Here.
Okay, we'll start with citizen's input. Anybody wants to address the council? Come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. If you're on Zoom, we'll take input in the chamber first and then you'll be able to unmute yourself and address the council if you desire.
Hi, everybody. Leslie Voorhees, 6176 Forest Hills Drive. I'm going to read something that I have prepared so I don't miss anything. So as you all know, our home flooded again on Monday, June 3rd, resulting in over five feet of muddy and manure-filled water filling our lower level walkout. The force of the water was so strong that it slammed through the wall, causing structural damage and a hole approximately seven feet tall by 12 feet wide. This is the fourth significant flood we have had since we moved into our home in 2005. Now here are a few things that you don't know. You don't know that as of my writing this, one week later, we still do not have air conditioning. We are still without electricity in some areas of our home, including the kitchen. We were without hot water for five days. You don't know that the damage to the exterior wall was so severe that it was unsafe for us to enter the back of our home where our master bedroom and bathroom are located. You don't know that due to the lack of hot water and air and the fact that our house was not structurally sound, we had to stay in a hotel for three nights. It's kind of hard to sleep in your bedroom when there is a very real threat, but it might collapse, and shower in your bathroom when you are without hot water. The house flooded on Monday and the area above the damage was not structurally sound until Friday, when the contractor was able to temporarily fix it. You don't know that our poor dog was so terrified that we had to kennel her for four days. You don't know that we spent nearly $1,000 this past week paying for hotel rooms, the kennel, restaurant food, and supplies. Thank God that we now qualify for flood insurance. It has made this unthinkable event a little less catastrophic. Ken is 61 and I am 57, and we are tired. We would like to retire in a few years, maybe downsize, maybe move to Florida. But that is all impossible because we are living in a house that we cannot sell. You all say how sorry you are, yet you continue to refuse to do the right thing and enlarge the size of the drainage pipe located in the culvert. And to add insult to injury, you replaced and enlarged the pipe right up to Forest Hills Drive, pretty much telling us that we don't matter. One last thing. I wish you had all taken the time to come see the immediate impact after the storm, as my daughter immediately reached out to you. But I am extending an open invitation to all of you to come take a look at it now. Hopefully seeing the damage will appear to your human side and not your political side.
Leslie, will you send me a copy of your comment? Thank you.
My turn. I'm Maggie Voorhees, Ken and Leslie's daughter, and 6176 Forest Hills Drive is the house that I grew up in. I wanted to talk to you today to give you a little bit of a different perspective than you have heard from my parents, maybe make you think about the possibility of your kids going through what I'm about to explain. I want to give you a little bit of a timeline about how my life has been impacted by this consistent flooding issue. I remember the first time we ever got water in our lower level of the house. I honestly remember every detail of that day. I had gotten highlights in my hair for the first time and I was wearing my favorite skirt to hold a whole new look together. I was eight years old. I'm 24 now. Here are some things I've accomplished since then. I finished elementary school, finished middle school, got my driver's license, graduated high school, voted for the first time, turned 21, graduated college, and this August I will begin my third year of teaching high school English. Now I know I just said I'm an English teacher and not a math teacher, but I'm pretty sure that those 16 years add up to two-thirds of my life. Two-thirds of my life, I have dealt with the impending doom and the burn in my chest of anxiety every single time it rains. I have witnessed my parents' sadness, anger, and helplessness every time the water comes into the house that they should have pride in. Two-thirds of my life, I have interpreted my local government's ambivalence towards taking action as a lack of empathy in a case of letting ego get in the way of what is right. The best time to fix this issue and prove me wrong was in 2014. The second best time is now. Please don't make the fraction of my life that has been impacted by flooding any bigger than it already is.
Hi, my name's Ken Voorhees. I live at 6176 Forest Hills Drive. I'm going to bring up some other concerns that we have. You spent all that money on the pond, the pipe bin, and put a grate down at the bottom. Well, it's been a week. There's a rain barrel. There's all kinds of boards and other debris jammed up against that grate. I think you need to think about what would happen if a child had slid into that pipe. With that grate permanently affixed, bolted down, nobody can get to it, what happens if there's a kid in there? A dog in there, a cat, something, anything. You need to fix the issue. The other issues I have are you permitted the builder to build the house where he did. There were permits and inspections done. Well, I had two two-by-fours holding up a piece of four-foot-tall OSB covering the sliding, what was a patio door. That stayed in place. The wall of my house caved in. I looked at it. Well, looked at the building code. It was to have anchor bolts seven inches from each end of each board and spaced six feet apart, holding that sill plate into the foundation. No, didn't do that. Somebody's inspection didn't get done properly. The other thing, the, all of the electrical. I think there's maybe three staples holding wires and boards in the house that I can see. And this is all stuff that I couldn't see when I bought the house. I didn't have the forethought to rip a wall open and see if they had done everything correctly, because I expected permits, inspections, and all that stuff done the way they're supposed to be done. It needs to be fixed. I don't, my house could have fallen down. The rest of the wall is three-quarters of an inch off where it was originally. I don't know how that happened. I need somebody to do something. I'm tired. It's been 16 years. I've been dealing with this nonsense and nothing. You've probably spent $200,000, $300,000 on looking for ways to fix it instead of just fixing it, whether it's buying me out at a fair market price or fixing the actual issue. You know, if, if that's the case, buy the house, tear it down, put a pond there. Don't have to worry about doing anything else. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody on Zoom would like to address the council? Please unmute yourself. Okay, we'll move on. First item, consent agenda. Anything help for separate discussion or do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion second. Call roll please.
Joe Meyer?
Hi.
Eastling?
Hi.
Clink Hammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
That's approved 5-0. First new business item is Resolution 80 of 2024, Resolution Ratifying the Preparation and Detail Plan Specs Form of Contract Notice of Hearing. Notice of Bidders, the cost of the Meadows Kart Path Replacement 2024 project. Just a clarification from the last meeting. We did publish and post all the necessary notifications for the public hearing two weeks ago. We are not required to put the documents in e-form on Board Docs. To best of my knowledge, no residents contacted City Hall and asked for a copy of them, and none showed up for the meeting requesting to review them, so I think the public hearing was duly processed and everything was done correctly. So at that point, you did table the plans and specs, and they are here for night for your approval.
I guess to start with, no comment from me other than if any questions regarding plans and specs, I might be happy to answer those.
Make a motion to accept Resolution Number 80 of 2024, Resolution Ratifying the Preparation and Detail Plan Specifications Notice of Hearing, Notice of Bidders for the Kart Pass at the Meadows.
Second.
Motion second, 80 of 2024. Any discussion? Call roll please.
Joe Meyer?
Nay.
Eastling?
Hi.
Clink Hammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
Approved 4-0. Next, we have the consent of bids for the Meadows Kart Replacement 2024 project. You have Resolution 89 of 2024, Resolution Awarding the Contract for the Meadows Kart Path Renovation Replacement 2024.
Yeah, so just to comment on the bids that were received, we opened bids last week on Wednesday. There were five bidders for this project. The bid amounts ranged from just shy of $600,000 up to just north of $750,000. So pretty good numbers that were tight. The low bid was from Valentine Construction Company. They're local. They live out, or not live, their company's based out Lower Oaks Court here, just on the other side of town. Their bid amount, including all of the alternate options, was in the amount of $597,635.80. I would recommend that if council is willing to move forward, they award the project to Valentine Construction with any of the alternate items that you would wish to proceed with as well.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 89 of 2024.
Second.
With all the alternates?
With all the alternates.
Second, okay. Valentine. Question? Call roll.
Joe Meyer?
Nay.
Eastling?
Hi.
Clink Hammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
That's approved 4-1. Item D is Resolution 90 of 2024, Resolution Approving Change Order Number 1 for the Autumn Drive Reconstruction Project.
Yeah, so just, I guess, an update on the project before we get into this. They're currently laying the sanitary sewer main. They're up between now Sanibel Lane and Hales Mill Road, so they're moving pretty well now. I'd say another maybe week or two of sanitary sewer work, and then they'll probably jump onto water main next. So they're moving along. Let's just hope that the rain now holds off for a while. With that being said, this change order actually is going back. If you remember, the first day they started laying sanitary sewer, there was that water main break where the water main was not located where anybody thought it was going to be. So this cost covers everything to replace and relocate that water main in the correct manner. That amount comes to $11,362.36.
That motion?
Make a motion to approve Change Order 1 for Autumn Drive. Resolution 90 of 2024.
Second.
Go ahead.
Motion second, discussion.
How bad was the storm on it?
How bad did the storm impact the project?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, from what I, I can tell, the only thing that I would have really been worried about is anything washing out in the low areas. I know Blaine did have some issues with the sanitary system. There was some rock and debris. They got in the pipe as part of construction and that all washed down to the list station, so that's something tough that he had to deal with and is dealing with. Otherwise, the stream, I think, held up fairly well. We'll have to see how the seeding turns out. I know they just seeded the week prior, and so I'm waiting to see how well it comes in. If they'll have to do some reseeding in the backyards, they might need to do some of that. So we'll, we'll see when we get there. But overall, I think it held up decently.
It survived. That was a bad one. Okay, thank you.
Along those lines, Nate, I, I know that the rain event was an anomaly, but is there anything that we can do to keep stuff from going down and messing up list stations? And again, I know that no one saw that coming.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's honestly just all on the contractors. They just need to be taking better care at the end of every day to, as they're laying pipe, to just be more careful and you know, and it could have been something as simple as a manhole cover just got off kilter because there was so much water running through the low area or, you know, and then rock just washes into that. So it's, you know, maybe no one's necessarily to blame for what happened, but it's one of those things that sometimes does happen.
Thank you.
Nate, just a couple of questions. When will we see the change order for all of the additional rock they had to remove? And then also, along the same question, as they're moving up Autumn Drive, are they running into rock there now or is that fairly stable?
Right. We're basically out of rock entirely now, so I, I don't anticipate any more rock excavation that would be necessary. Maybe down in the low area when they come through with some of the utilities down there, but, but even so, at the bottom of the hill, it was pretty minimal. So the rock excavation, it'll probably be one of those items that does get balanced out in the final change order because it's a bid item and it's at unit price. So we'll, we'll do, when we do the quantity balance. But I think the last time I checked with all the rock accounted for, it was going to be just north of $20,000 is what it's going to equate to.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Discussion? Call roll please.
Joe Meyer?
Hi.
Eastling?
Hi.
Clink Hammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
That's approved 5-0. Next item is Resolution 91, 2024, Resolution Approving Pay Up Number 4 for the Autumn Drive Reconstruction Project.
Yeah, so this pay request accounts primarily for sanitary sewer work. Obviously, that's what they've been working on. And then some of the restoration and seeding items for some of the backyard. Well, the total for Pay Request Number 4 comes to the amount of $128,598.86. Unless there are any questions on Pay Request 4, we recommend approval.
I did think of one other question. From a, from a timeline standpoint, because of the weather that we've had this spring, where would you put project as far on time or how far behind are we? Because people that live up on Autumn kind of ask me, so I just wanted to let them know.
Yeah, I, I don't think at the moment we're in danger of getting done within the bid time limit or the time limit the contractor has, which goes into, I believe, late September, early October. I'd have to double check those dates, but definitely going to be a little later than I'm sure everyone would have liked, you know? So it's, it's just one of those things that, it should still get done this fall.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 91-2024.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Call roll.
Joe Meyer?
Hi.
Eastling?
Hi.
Clink Hammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
That's approved 5-0. Resolution 92 of 2024, Resolution Approving Pay Up Number 3, Forest Hills Wetland Improvements Project.
So very short update on Forest Hills. They were actually able to get in and work a day over the weekend, last weekend, to try and get some of the final grading completed. So now, really, what it's looking like is they just need to get the seeding done. Hopefully, the weather holds out. They can get that done here in the next week or two. With that being said, Pay Request 3 is for just a few little items here and there, storm sewer-related and site grading and erosion control rate-related. And that amount comes to $9,371.75. Unless there's any questions, MSA would recommend approval of Pay Request 3.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 92 of 2024, Resolution Approving Pay Application Number 3 for the Forest Hills Wetland Improvement Project.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion. Call roll.
Joe Meyer?
Hi.
Eastling?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
And Clink Hammer? Hi.
Late, approval 5-0. Next item is Resolution 93 of 2024, Resolution Awarding the Contract for the demolition of 2453 Radford Road, 5135 Asbury Road.
I sent out RFPs for the demolition of both those structures. They're both in line for the realignment of the Hales Mill Road into Radford Road. The lowest responsible bidder separately was Lansing Brothers at $32,650. He also entered in a voluntary alternate where he said if he got both houses, he would do it for $29,900. So the recommendation is to award the contract to Lansing Brothers Construction.
Just one quick question. Are we, do we have any obligation for the person that, on Radford Road, for them to take anything else out of that house? Okay, and then anything, when the, does the demolition include salvage? They can take anything that's in the buildings? Is that how that works?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Beth, I have a question. Was your recommendation to do the $29,000 for both of it and get it done?
$29,900 for both structures, for Lansing.
Okay. Okay, that's all.
And they did check references?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 93 of 2024, Resolution Awarding the Contract for the demolition of the two, the two properties, the Lansing Brothers, for $29,900.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? There is some asbestos abatement need to be done, coordinated. That contract is pretty small and it's been awarded, just so you know.
We'll also be coordinating disconnection of utilities. So there's, well, the next meeting will be doing the notice to proceed and awarding the contract. But in the meantime, like Jim said, there's, you know, asbestos coordination and disconnection of utilities and things to be coordinated with this.
Just, just a question then, as far as the demolition, okay, do they take it just down to the dirt and then, or do they level the property, level the property off?
They're responsible for removing the foundation and leveling the property up and restoring the turf.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, and just for clarification purposes, any of the asbestos abatement that's going on there is on the contractor, not back on the city again for an addition.
It's a separate contract.
Different contract.
It's a separate contract.
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Call roll please.
Joe Meyer?
Hi.
Eastling?
Hi.
Clink Hammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
That's approved 5-0. Last item is Resolution 94, 2024, Resolution Approving Insurance Premium for Property Liability and Workman's Compensation Insurance Services. The fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Kevin is here from County Butler. Answer any questions. There's some open-ended questions on deductibles, so whatever you want to do.
Is it pretty typical that they're all going to the, like a 1% that, I mean, so, so you can tell by my question today, so
Kevin, will you take the microphone? Otherwise, people can't hear you.
What, what my concern is, is obviously, right now, if, if we had hail or wind damage, the deductible is $2,500. So basically, what happens now with the new contract, for a 10% increase in cost, we have to absorb the first 200, I'm saying 30,000. I don't, don't know the exact number, but $230,000 of wind and hail damage. Is that correct?
Sort of. Okay. So to answer your question, your first question was, is it typical? The answer is yes. Right now, the, the industry largely is moving toward wind and hail deductibles as separate items. So 1% and 2% is pretty common. We're starting to see 3%, starting to see 5%. Some companies have, have still layered in flat, you know, dollar deductibles. Generally, in this particular industry or this particular class, not something we're seeing. So yes, the, the movement toward a wind and hail deductible is the norm right now.
And then, and then just a couple of clarification points for me. If it were just this building that got damaged, is it 1% of the insured value of this building or the total?
Right, right. 1% of the insured value.
Of the building?
Correct.
Okay, and then is the deductible similar to medical deductible or to, is it, is it per event or is it punitive?
Per occurrence.
Okay.
Each occurrence.
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't know if it's, you know, so what my, what my concern was is the two addendums then, you know, we're, we're going up 10% and if we take either one of the addendums, it's going to be another 10% approximately to add on for less coverage than what we currently have. Because it's, we're $2,500 deductible. The, the smallest deductible I saw in there was $50,000, correct?
Yeah, and we could look at a lower option. So for instance,
Yeah, no, I'm not, I
25, but it gets to a point where you're going to have diminishing returns of the deductible versus the premium you're going to pay out. So most of the buybacks that we're seeing, or buy downs, if you want to call it that, usually are $100,000 or more. So we, we had them drop to a 50 just as a, as a comparable. So, and, and that, again, is purely an option, right? That's not something that you, you have to have, but it's a means for you as a, as a group to say, okay, maybe the city doesn't want to take. If there was a catastrophic event and we had a, you know, a $20 million loss across the schedule, and we've got a $200,000 wind deductible, does the city want to absorb $200,000 or do we make that maybe $50,000 now or $100,000 and pay, you know, $13,000 or $17,000 roughly for those options? So not something you have to have, just a means to say there's maybe a better way to finance a catastrophic event.
From a statistical standpoint, and in the last four years, how many wind hail damage claims have we filed, you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, no. Obviously, nothing catastrophic, right? So
Okay, and then the other thing, like, I know a lot of people personally carry an umbrella liability. Do we have umbrella liability on top of our policy or?
So the answer is you have liability. Umbrella is a liability coverage, not a property.
No, I understand that.
So yes.
I, I, this is a second, second, next question.
Yep.
We do have an umbrella liability also?
Correct. But just to clarify, that doesn't cover property. Umbrella is a liability concern, so it covers liability for third-party events. Property is a first-party coverage.
Just, and then one other question that came to mind is, I know our deductible is $2,500, which city our size, to me, seems awful low. What other cities that you, that you insure, is $10,000 deductible pretty common?
It really depends on, on the, the size and what you are comfortable with absorbing. So 2,500 is probably still pretty low by most standards, whether you're a city or, or a commercial business or anything. So, yeah, I mean, 2,500 is, is pretty low.
So basically, if we, if I read this right, then Beth, if we self-insured up to the $10,000 deductible, we'd save about $7,000 approximately.
Uh, $7,331 would be the difference in the property premium if you went to a $10,000 deductible. But again, it's per occurrence, so you also have to keep in mind that if you had two $10,000 property events, you're backwards. Right? So it's a balancing thing, right? So right now, So, right now, that program, uh, with EMC and, and really most companies are moving toward higher deductibles regardless. So, you know, there's no guarantee that we are not sitting here next year and you're looking at a required five thousand dollars or, or maybe higher. So, um, it is a moving target at this point, so.
Kevin, down the road, are we going to have to worry about the roof not being insured because it ages?
Um, it's not that you have to worry about it not being insured, it's just how it's going to be covered. And you, you have that currently.
It's not going to be fully covered.
Right, so, the, the policy actually does have a limitation on roof surfaces that are over fifteen years of age. So, any structure that has a roof that's fifteen years or older is going to be valued on actual cash value and not replacement value. So, the difference there is, actual cash value takes the replacement value and depreciates it.
Thank you. Just the one, I'm sorry, I had one other thing I asked Beth about this afternoon.
Let me just get my word in here just a minute. So.
Sorry, sorry.
Now, this, where did the fifteen-year thing come from? Because if your average roof life is supposed to be forty years, I mean, that's not even, that's not even half the coverage.
Where it comes from is, that's up to the insurance company's discretion.
Underwriting.
So, I, I'm, I'm assuming that they're, they're basing it off what they see within their losses. Um, and at some point, the, the depreciation on the roof is going, you, once you get to a certain age, it's going to be, you know.
Single company.
The amount of depreciation is going to be there.
Yeah, I know.
Right, so.
Okay, thank you, sorry, Russ.
No, that was my fault. The one other point that I just wanted to make, group, that Beth answered for me this afternoon, um, I asked about the solar panels on the roof. If that was under this insurance and Beth said that solar panels are owned by Eagle Point.
Right.
They would be, we probably should make sure that they have them covered by insurance. Just, maybe they should, do we, do we get it, sir?
We, we get it righter.
We do get it righter, okay, good, thank you.
What's the approximate age of the metal's roof, Jeremy? Less than ten, isn't it?
No.
That's okay.
Really?
Okay, that's fine, I just, I thought it was a little more than that, all right. So, counsel, any, any, any motions? The discussion.
We want to talk about, uh, deductible, what, what everybody feels like.
Making, yeah.
I won't change the deductible, it's not worth it, we have two occurrences. No, 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 I mean, the, on the wind and hail, the only options that are presented to us are, it's not twenty-five hundred dollars, it's fifty thousand or one hundred thousand dollars, is what was in the, in the.
There's not enough savings, I don't believe.
I, I'm, not enough savings for what?
Go to a higher deductible.
No, we have to go to a higher deductible, it's.
Well, yeah, that's.
They didn't give us an option for twenty-five hundred, so all I'm saying is, we have the option for fifty, for seventeen thousand dollars. Or we have an option for a hundred for thirteen thousand dollars, and it's currently twenty-five hundred dollars. So, it's, we're going up to fifty or a, a hundred on wind and hail.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, I don't want to go from fifty to a hundred because we're not saving enough money.
I think I tracked.
I, I don't understand.
You don't, you go with the higher deductible to save money on the, on the premium.
That's correct.
Right, so.
You kind of self-insure yourself doing that.
Exactly.
But we're only saving three thousand, we're on the hook for another fifty.
Right.
So, we'd have to go eighteen years.
So, you're saying keep it at the fifty?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, okay, I agree with you.
I'm just saying, keep it is not the right word because we're not at fifty.
But we have to go to fifty.
That's, okay, that's what.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I, I just want to clarify, the buy-downed option on the wind and hail, eh, you're not at fifty or a hundred. If you do nothing with those options, your wind or hail deductible is at one percent. Okay, so, if you enact one of these options, then you're, you're taking either a fifty or a hundred thousand dollar maximum deductible that the city then pays in the, that balance. So, let's say we had a, you know, a derecho again, that widely sweeps through this area, we lose twenty million dollars worth of property on the city's schedule. You have a two hundred thousand dollar wind loss. With one of these options, either fifty or a hundred, your deductible, what the city takes on is now fifty or a hundred. The rest of that is now on the responsibility of the insurance company. If you do nothing, then it's two hundred.
We would need ten million dollars in damage to basically equate to a hundred thousand dollar.
Right. Then, then, so again, the whole idea of this is, are you concerned if we had a large-scale catastrophic type event where we have significantly higher dollars at risk, right?
Do we have ten million dollars in structures?
Yes. Yeah, we have, we have a schedule of.
Twenty-six million dollars in structures, so basically, over half of the city would have to be, you know, gone. I mean, I, I would look at it too, like, this building's like, let's just say, three million dollars, so if this is the only building that's, you know, take, is, goes down or, is, with, that would only be, that would be subject to loan, it would be three, thirty thousand dollars. We would be responsible for that.
This, this building is insured currently at four million four hundred and sixty-nine thousand of, of the total, so.
You, you wastewater treatment plan, I guess.
Right.
At the pass, okay.
One, one other question then, too, now, we talked about wind and hail, um, what's the, what, what happens, what about water? If, if one of the windows broke and water came through this building, is, are we covered or is that a flood?
Depends on what, what happened. I mean, if it was, the window broke because something hit it and water came in, yeah. If, if water is, if it's a surface flood, you know, flood or water is an exclusion under property policies. People call it flood, but it's actually called the water exclusion because, because it's more than just flood. Um, and flood is a separate insurance policy, so you have to, you have to buy flood, flood as a separate item. So, in that situation, if it was surface water, flood, and it busted the window and came in, then no, not, not under this policy, you would need a separate policy.
I've, I've been through those too, I, and, uh.
First thing they said, nope, uncovered.
Yep.
Like if last week, when they had that water, if that came up in here, we would not be insured.
Coming through the window.
Right. We'd have bigger problems, came up in here. These physical geography out here, I think we're talking about Mississippi River right here.
Anything else, otherwise I'll make.
So, my understanding then that we're going to, we're going to bump that up to the fifty grand and leave it alone, is that, is that the ticket?
Fifty's as high as I'll go.
Fifty's, I, oh, okay, yeah, I, I'm, I think I'm.
That's what the.
I think I'm there too.
So then, Beth, well, we have to re-budget then because that's going to obviously be a lot higher than the twelve percent.
Well, as budgeting goes, they're just really good guesses and it's not, um, we're, we are a little bit, um, low, like, we budgeted, um, twelve percent. And this renewal, even though, yes, and there's less coverage under some of the renewal, but the quarter one seventy-nine, three oh four is, um, less than what we budgeted. So, we have about forty-seven hundred dollars in our budget to, you know, move it towards, if you decide to move with the wind hail, um, policy. So, it would actually be twelve thousand for the, um, for the fifty thousand and eighty-four hundred for the, um, hundred thousand.
We can cover that with one month of the interest.
And then too, that also gets spread across, these also get spread across budgets, not, not every piece of property's in the general fund, so, you know, we budget, when I get the policy, I break it down based on, you know, the valuations, you know, and spread it across all the different budgets too, so.
And again, I just want to stress.
Personally, right?
Those are options, you, you're not required to have a buy-down or buy-back on the winter hail, just.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept resolution number ninety-four of twenty twenty-four. With, to include, well, we're stuck with the fif, we're taking the fifty thousand.
We can do one percent, right?
That's, that's as you presented it, right?
Which is two hundred and seventy. Need to add the buy-back to it.
I guess, I think we weren't going to do the buy-back.
Make a motion, we'll find out.
Uh, with the one percent that Kevin presented.
Wait a minute, what did you say with what? So, we're leaving it at the one percent?
We're not doing the buy-back?
No, you're not leaving anything, he's only making a motion.
I'm sorry.
You'll decide what it's going to be, the motion was to accept that it's presented without the buy-back.
That's.
Buy-down.
Okay.
There's a second. I apologize. Okay?
So, I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second discussion.
Okay, so, now, just, just bear with me then, so what we, what we're asking, right now, the motion is, with the one percent means our deductible will be two hundred and thirty-six approximately. So, so two hundred and sixty thousand dollars approximately.
Of everything. But it's each structure. If, if everything went down, that's, yeah.
It's, it's one percent, like, it was one percent of this structure, which would be forty thousand, the damage was limited here, right? Well, okay, so.
But it's not by structure.
I did ask you before if it was by structure and you said it was.
Yeah.
Okay, so if only City Hall was hit, our deductible is twenty, two hundred and sixty thousand, okay, as the motion was presented. Yep.
Yeah, you don't want, that's, that's what I was concerned about, so, so if, if, if we want to lower the deductible to fifty thousand dollars, we have to do the buy-back, right?
Okay. All right.
I'm, I can't rescind, I can never rescind.
Let's, let's, let's call roll, please.
Joe Meyer.
Nay.
Eastling. Nay. Clink Hammer.
Nay.
Miller.
Nay.
Bryce, yeah, there we are.
Aye. It was my motion, I had to. It was my motion.
You wanted to rescind it, so.
It, it, it's always, it's, it's a, it gets to discussion, okay, so, is there a second motion on?
I'll, no, I had it when, after you said that.
All right, go ahead, Russ.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution ninety-four of twenty twenty-four, proving insurance premium for property liability and workers' comp insurance, including a purchase of optional fifty K wind hail buy-back for seventeen thousand six hundred.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion?
Are we doing anything with the EMC? Or that's, we're going with the EMC?
Well, if we're going with the premium of one seventy-nine, three oh four, that's everything is with EMC.
Okay, okay, good. Seventeen, two seventy.
Well, if we just say with the fifty thousand deductible, that would get us to.
That's with the fifty.
All right. Motion to second, with the fifty thousand dollar deductible, it will be slightly less than was, was in your packet of seventeen thousand two seventy-four. Any other discussion? All roll, please.
Joe Meyer.
Aye.
Eastling.
Aye.
Clink Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Okay, I'll take citizens' input, anything that previously discussed. All right, you have, uh, police and GM report, comments, questions, motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close. Okay, that's approved, um, Craig, do you want to start tonight?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to, the rainfall that we've been having is, has been incredible, and I'd like to just kind of congratulate our city staff and our public works people. Were doing, were working with and dealing with it best they can and being able to provide business as usual, so, kudos to you.
Yeah, I, I echo that, um, I know that some of the storm drains and things got blocked up and stuff like that, and people had them cleaned out, I mean, the next day. And I know you had three lift stations underwater, so, I mean, it, I, everything back on track again, so. Okay, well, congratulations on outstanding jobs, thank you.
Up.
Um, are you going to address the citizens' input or do you want us to talk about it or?
I, I think you guys should, should have some discussion if there's anything you want staff to do. Uh, at this point, I am, no intention of doing anything. I mean, I had water running in my basement in the window and I had a permit, nobody worried about where mine was, but.
Well, I just didn't know, you and I have been around a while, I didn't know, the rest of them know the history of what went on there. I know this spells some of it out, but.
Yeah.
I guess the thing I want to add to it is, I was out there the first time it happened, and I was out there last week, and I offered our help right away, the first time it happened, until they got a lawyer, so that changed everything. So, our hands are tied, it's between their lawyers and our lawyers, so.
Well, and.
I just think everybody should know that.
Some other background was, we met with the two homeowners, the contractor, developer, the city engineer.
Right.
And the recommendation was to fill in the walkout and homeowners were adamant they were not giving up the walkout, didn't want to lose the value, and now they're asking us to fill it in. At least, that was the comment that was made in, in the news, so I, I don't know what you want to do, um.
But, didn't, didn't we give them fifteen thousand dollars and they could have filled it in with the last?
Well, they, I think they got a settlement from all three, I, we don't, we don't know, where the, they sued us, the contractor and the developer, the city insurance gave them fifteen thousand.
And I think the other thing that they don't realize, and, and they always say, put in a bigger pipe, Nate, I was down, and there was a four-foot pipe down by Clink Hammer's, and that water was running solid through that pipe. There's no, I don't know how big a pipe, you couldn't put a big enough pipe in there to handle that water.
Yeah.
Did you?
Well, the real truth of the matter is, th, those culprits are, are sized to not only, uh, allow water to flow in there, but to also, to keep so much water to flow through there, because, so, so we, uh, uh, avoid flooding their house, we flood eight more. Where's the wind there? I mean, that, that's been my contention all along, is you can put a bigger pipe in there to get the water moving, but then you got problems on the other side of the pipe. So, those things are designed that way.
Well, and some other numbers, and we could be off by just a small amount, but I don't remember who was on council then, I think three of them, or four of you were. We had an appraisal, you know, give us the value of the house, if there are no, no water issues whatsoever. What's the value of the house, no water issues, whatever, minus the walkout, which was about ten thousand dollars. Give us the market value at that time, I think it was twenty twenty-one, knowing the water history and having that be disclosed, and with like, one ninety-three, anyhow, they were down about ninety thousand then, digging the heels in to save ten thousand dollars. Um, I'm not an engineer, and if you want staff to go back and look at this, but when that other, so you had, you had a detention, a detention basin, it includes their basement, I agree, it was this big. Now, they filled theirs in, it's this big. You're not going to be able to, you fill that in, I don't know what that's going to do, now you've got no place for the water to go, and there's no pipe big enough if you've lost half your detention. I mean, again, not an engineer, but my thought is, the only you could do is tear the house down and make that detention.
Well, then, and then the other problem that you run into, even the, even building a detention basin, that was one of the things that was discussed about putting it in the field, all, all of our detention basins were overflowed anyway, didn't they? I mean, it's a natural waterway, the water runs down right where they built their house.
Well, the other problem is the water's coming from.
Farm, yeah, the farm, yeah, the water in there is coming from that farm, but the other thing that, that I was curious about, at the time, as, as I recall, there was, there was a house on both sides of that draw, okay? Did the, the house that's on the other side that did the repairs, did they have water damage or not, did, do we know? But I mean, there were a lot of houses in Asbury that had water in their basement over this.
Because it was this high up the siding, did it go in a window or did it come in through the sump, you don't?
Yeah, I thought they put cement, a cement wall in for their whole back, they eliminated the walkout so that there's no option.
But if you got a foot or more up the siding of that house, what happens to the Voorhees house if you fill that in? How high is the water going to be, and that, I mean, I can't fan them, if you're taking away half, probably more than half of them, what's available capacity for the water to? what's available capacity for the water to, to retain, so how high does it get on the siding then?
And, and then let me ask you this, if some point, somebody in the city of Dubuque or the, or they decide to build a subdivision on that property up above there, they would be responsible for the water flow coming off of that property, right? At that point?
I believe Dubuque is similar in, in the way that Asbury runs it, but I believe you have to have enough detention when you do the subdivision, that it's basically the amount of runoff is equal to as is before being built or less. I believe that's the, the ruling on it.
Yeah, yes, but even at that, we're talking, you're talking about rain events here that are, that go over and above what these things are designed for, capacity wise.
Yes, I mean, what we got for rainfall was, what was it, four and some odd inches of rain?
Yeah.
In, in an hour, I mean, that's.
Yeah, and the point that I'm trying to make here.
Can't really design, if you design for that, you're spending more money than it's.
Well, the point that I'm making here is, you can only design for so much before you've overdesigned and then create problems because you've overdesigned for it.
I've been doing this for fifteen years, I drove from La Jolla to Asbury. Every waterway, every. Camp Brown, Fred, River, other, was over, what, hundreds of feet.
Yeah.
So, the thing that you're gonna design and put a bigger pipe on it, it's water and not water.
Just, I'm very humble. Oh, I agree with you, and just as an FYI, we just did Sun Valley, up above on Sun Valley, water was going over the top of the road on Sun Valley, even after we put in the new storm sewer pipes, I mean, there's just no way that, that it can handle that kind of water. I mean, you can't build it big enough.
I'm sure I could sum it up this way, I mean, we're, we're not ogres, we're all human beings and we feel for them and the issues that they've had to go through, but there, there comes a point when you just have to say, I, I'm sorry, there's, I, I, I can't, I don't have the wherewithal, the finances, the whatever, to just buy you out outright, because then, then what happens, the next guy comes along and then we gotta buy them out?
Jim wants a detention basin.
Yeah, Jim's not, I'm not buying Jim out either.
Karen, any comments on the water lease, I know we're, we're still on round tables, we haven't got.
Um, the only thing I could say is, I think we, after reading this and discussing it with other, I think we tried everything we could with them. I feel very bad, I'm sorry it had to happen to them, but I think the city has tried and tried, tried, and there's nothing much else we can do.
Would it?
Did I hear they had, they have flood insurance?
Yeah, that's what, that's what the last comment was.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, nothing would preclude them from going to Stormwater Committee and asking them to review it, correct? I mean, I would think you as a counsel would probably want them to go there anyhow, I mean, if they came to me, I'd say, well, go talk to the Stormwater Committee because counsel didn't, you know, right, I'm, I'm not hearing anybody say, go get an engineer and, you know, start printing money, right? So I, I would say to them, go to talk to Stormwater Committee, if the committee was willing to take up the thing, that follows the chain events and the process to get to council and then to the CIP, right? I mean.
The one question.
What else could I tell them, right?
One question I had, Jake, I guess, he mentioned that we put a bigger pipe on the, the lower side of the road and we left, what is it, a twenty-two inch drain on their side, is that still, you know what size?
I think it's a thirty.
What size the drain is that goes under the road?
Two footer right now.
I'm not as familiar with that project, because that was actually, if you recall, that was Origin or IAW did those upgrades, and I just don't off the top of my head, I'm sure I've seen the plans at one point or another, but I, I don't know this.
Russ, I looked at the plans and they're thirty inches on the Borghese side and forty-eight on the other side.
Thirty, thirty, thirty going into forty-eight, okay.
And, and the information that's been disseminated is, they were told that when the city finished with the northern part, the stormwater, we were gonna continue that culvert across the road to the south. That was never promised, that was never done, it was never approved, so I, it's basically saying that we, we, we said we would do it, we didn't do it, we never said we would do it, so.
We did have a discussion about it, but, but the problem was, with the utilities and everything that are going under that road, that road would have had it been raised, as I recall, which would have created another dam, you know, because it's a, it's, it's designed for the water to top the road if it does, if the storm sewer can't handle it, so to get that bigger pipe in there, we would have had to go raise that road, as I recall, or put a bridge in.
Go horizontally instead of. Well, to date, they have not contacted myself or any staff, so.
That was something that I, the daughter said, or one of, I, maybe it was the mother who said, uh, that her daughter contacted all of us, and I didn't receive any.
I received nothing.
Thing.
They sent a letter to, the daughter sent a letter to Karen and myself and said that, they, they said Jim told us.
I, I did.
I know.
I, I couldn't remember, well. No, but let me explain it, because I couldn't remember if you were on council when we decided not, not to upsize, you were, I, at the time, I, I said, there's three that have already voted against or anything for you, and I knew the three of you did, I said Karen's new, and I didn't know, Russ, I said, I'd start with the ones that are new to the, to the situation, that, that's why.
No, no, I.
But I would have sent it to all five, but, you know, wouldn't take any more work, but I said specifically, again, I was not remembering when you, where you were, like, you know, the other three have looked at it and said, no, I don't know that their opinions are gonna change, so start with the two that may have a fresh set of eyes and was off by one, but that's, that's why it was sent to you, that was a suggestion to start with you, but I, I wouldn't have stopped there, I mean, not like you had to buy a stamp.
When they, yeah, and they settled with it, there was a three, there were three groups involved in the original settlement, the contractor, us, and who's the third one?
Developer. And I think, what was the first thing that was communicated to you, Tom, that night?
Well, this, this FYI too, they didn't bring, they didn't talk to you guys, but it's been on case, it was on, it was on, on KCRG, the news had a big thing on it too already.
Anyhow, all right, any other discussion on that, if they come to me and say, go talk to Stormwater, I can't tell them they can't, but I guess if they're gonna get a Stormwater project, that's where it's supposed to start. I'm not gonna say the Stormwater Committee is gonna change anything, but that's. Yeah, that's fine.
So I started that, the other thing I wanted to bring up, I talked to Tom and somebody overheard about these, um, electric bikes or scooters or whatever. I think we need to, uh, review that and see what we can do. I, I don't know if you heard Jim, but I was driving my car alongside the scooter going twenty-five miles an hour and he's on the sidewalk, and to me, that's unacceptable, something's gotta change. So.
Do we not?
Staff needs a look in that or whatever.
Don't we have an ordinance that?
Our, so, bikes aren't supposed to be on sidewalks, are they?
No.
According to ordinance?
Does that include electric bikes? Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I asked the question is, and, and you answered it, I think, but is an electric bike where the, our trails say no motorized vehicles, is an electric bike a vehicle? And you said according to Iowa, it isn't a motorized vehicle?
But it is a bike and it should be on the sidewalk, so it's not an ordinance issue, it's gonna be an enforcement issue.
Isn't a scooter an electric?
We have an ordinance that says bike.
Which I said, right.
But scooters.
However, when I ride.
Scooters.
When I ride my granddaughter home from school on her bike and we get to Asbury Road.
Absolutely.
She's on the sidewalk, I would not put her on the street on her bike.
I agree with you. That's all I have.
Yes, um, rain event, um, I know that we put a dumpster up by the, uh, water treatment facility and, and I had some carpet that needed to go up there myself, but I noticed that it was kind of overflowing, and I was wondering why we got the smaller, the smaller dumpster instead of the bigger one, and I don't know, I don't know. So people could put it over the top. Oh, okay, that makes, that makes sense, did we, did we put another one up there or did we just leave that one go? Because I know when I went over there, it was full of overflowing. It must have been last.
And it's, it's gone.
Oh, okay, that, that was it, that was the only, that was the only thing that I was wondering is, why did we go with the smaller dumpster instead of the? Got it, yep, nope, that makes good sense, okay, that's all I had, thanks.
Blaine, in the smallness of things, my neighbor had his electric bike, he says, thank you very much, I don't know who delivered it to him, but he said it was very nice and he was very happy that he did get it back, so he says, tell him thank you.
All right, I don't have anything, Beth?
Nothing for me.
All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Aver?
Aye.
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 Close.